Good evening. The City of Southport Board of Aldermen Meeting, March 9th, 2023, is now called to order. Thank you all for being here this evening. Thank you for your attendance. Welcome and welcome to those who are watching virtually. In particular, we want to welcome the Lions Club tonight. Thank you for being here tonight. For our invocation, we have two parts to our invocation. One will be a moment of silence for former Alderman Ed Boguski, whom the Lions Club knows well. He was a member. He was, as I said, a former Alderman, a public servant. He was a great man, a good friend, and he was passionate about Southport. He was active, as I said, in the Lions Club. He was chairman of their flag committee, the flags that you see on Howe Street. For our holidays, the Lions Club puts those out. So we thank you for that. We remember your friend and our former Alderman, Mr. Boguski. And we always should remember that he was a very good letter writer to the Stateport Pilot. He kept things informed, and I enjoyed reading his letters and had read one even at one of our meetings. So that will be the first part, a moment of silence for Alderman, former Alderman Boguski. And then I'm honored to have Reverend Robert Lapp here for our invocation. So if you will please stand for a moment of silence, then Reverend Lapp, and then our pledge of allegiance.
The first services met in members' homes, and usually it was Mrs. Pepper's home on 304 West Moore Street. The first sanctuary was built in 1903 between Nash and West West Streets. In 1955, James and Margaret Harper, publishers of the Stateport Pilot newspaper, donated the land on Stewart and Moore Streets where we reside today, although not in the same structure. Reverend Alice Haney, some of you will remember, was the pastor when the current sanctuary was built in 2006. And my friend, the Reverend Dr. Anne James, was the pastor when the ministry center was completed in 2019. We are very pleased to be a part of this wonderful community. So I invite you to join your heart with mine as we pray. Holy One, you have blessed the city of Southport with such beauty, wonder, and design. The Cape Fear River meeting the ocean, a life-giving climate, a rich and wonderful history, and a future filled with hope and expectation of what's possible when we come together and work together. We are truly grateful, oh God. And we ask that you continue to bless the citizens of Southport, their elected officials, and the staff who through their dedicated service make this such a wonderful place to live and to visit. Bless their work and their decisions that will be made this evening. May their deliberations be done in a spirit of wisdom and kindness and justice, and guide these community leaders to serve faithfully and to promote the well-being of all. And may we all be good stewards of this wonderful place we call home. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Lapp. And we move forward with hope and expectation. So thank you, thank you for that. And again, we remember former Alderman, Mr. Ed Boguski. Before public comment, I'd like to make just a few introductory remarks for our citizens. We have a very robust agenda, as we do every meeting. Our agenda includes the electric rate study, shoreline stabilization to yacht basin traffic pattern. Also, mayorial term change tabled from the February meeting, animal welfare is on the agenda, and audit contracts. We have workshops every month, and this includes the agenda for the regular board of Alderman meeting. So our board of Aldermen and city staff are prepared, and I look forward to the discussion and to the decisions. Of note, our next workshop, April 11th, 9:00 a.m. at Indian Trail Meeting Hall. And these workshops are an open discussion where our citizens, our city staff, our board, our consultants, we have open dialogue, so please come and join us. We have on the agenda there so far are the Southport cemeteries in April, and also our normal agenda review for the meeting on April 30th. And I'm sure the city manager will find other issues that we need to look at before then. So I want to brief you on that. And before we go to our next item, which will be public comment. So we look forward to your comments. Please come up to the podium, make sure the microphone is on, state your name, your address, your topic, and let's try to keep it to three minutes as the ACC tournament is going on soon. And I apologize for that comment. So, Madam Clark.
Ralph Britton.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Ralph Britton. I live at 6163 Riverside Circle, Southport. We've been here about five years. I am here tonight to address what I've read in the papers, and basically it's about the proposed change from the mayor's term of two years to four years. And what I'm about to say in no way implies any negatives towards our current mayor or any of the board members. It's just my two cents, and you can take it for that. So I hate to read a statement, but I've read it, I've typed it, I've read it again and again, but just excuse me while I read it, please. "My perspective is that the town council should not pursue the four-year mayor term." As you know, many cities across America have changed their charter to move to the four-year term. The internet is replete with articles and examples of the proposed change from two years to four years, but however, in much larger cities. These cities have been cited as having proven leadership, sound infrastructure, and continuity. Making the change may make sense for larger populated cities, but not for Southport, in my opinion, at this time. My thoughts are based on my experience as a former mayor and Alderman with the town of Drexel, North Carolina. I believe a four-year term should be more of a reward for exemplary leadership from past terms and based on merit, employee stability, and project continuity and accomplishments, but most importantly, project continuity. All the above mentioned are for the purpose of improving the quality of life for our citizens. Please understand that my comments are in no way made to cast dispersions or negative thoughts towards our current administration, but moreover, they're clarification of why a four-year term is not justified nor deserved, in my opinion, at this time. It should be earned, in my opinion. Time and grade, as we used to say in the military, should not be a factor for promotion. An example of merit would be a look back at our time of accomplishment during challenges that we faced here, and that our mayor and board did a great job. Also, that major accomplishments were realized in our current time of financial challenge. Another indicator of merit would be transparent leadership, which creates buy-in with all employees, board members, and city leadership on the vast majority of issues. Past actions always speak louder than promises, in my opinion. As far as my experience of running for reelection in Drexel, I remember the very first time as mayor, and honestly, I did not want to do that, and not having to do it every two years. It just seemed like it was just too infrequent to do it. However, once the process of reelection began, it was medicine for me, as I had to work to ask for the job again and renew trust by our voters. As the mayor is the person most citizens address outside the chamber, he or she is the face of the community. The reelection period reminded me of my responsibilities to the board, the town manager, and mostly to the citizens as I was asking to be hired again as mayor. That responsibility is accepting accountability, knowing our community relied on our leadership, and that every citizen counts. The reelection period for me provided opportunities to meet more citizens and build relationships. I think engendering trust, and this is my thought, engendering trust is the most important part of governance. It was also a time to be more visible, which provokes discussion, and as mayors, we actually hear more about what's on the minds of our citizens. A two-year mayor term is the opportunity to renew the mayor's contract with the citizens. So personally, I just can't endorse a four-year term at this time, maybe down the road. Thank you so much for allowing me to read these comments. I really appreciate it, and Judy and I love living here. We think the quality of life is great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clark.
Brian Stevens.
My name is Brian Stevens. I live in Cates Cove. And good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Aldermen, fellow citizens. Recently, we listened to a presentation on the shoreline stabilization. Maybe I'm amiss, but I do not recall hearing anything about a living shoreline. We've talked about it. Is that included in the plan for the shoreline stabilization? Thank you.
Madam Clark.
Maria Swenson.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to our city officials for holding this meeting and for listening to us citizens. We truly appreciate it. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I'm here about the traffic flow at the yacht basin. Myself, Craig Blanks, instigated this. He's the frying pan manager, and spoke to Todd Coring and our mayor. It was a modification due to the fact that we were able to open to the public again on Memorial Day Friday, which, as a restaurateur, that's kind of a nightmare after everybody's been locked up for seven months. So we knew everybody was going to come out. So we asked for social distancing by making it one-way. Myself and my husband personally modified our restaurant. We increased our seating. We did everything possible to ensure health, safety, as many other businesses were required to do. We are now out of that process. Everybody is back to normal, as much as normal is in anyone's life. I'm asking that the traffic pattern go back to the way it was. There is a question about the curve at Yacht Basin in Bay. It's been like that forever, forever and ever. It's always been tight, but it's possible. Today, I guess, instigated a video of two large trucks going in opposite directions, very large diesel trucks owned by my husband, and it worked. It was no problem. I don't think that the population and the traffic has increased that much since 2019 that we have to leave it this way. It causes confusion, not only for locals but for out-of-towners. It also diverts all that traffic through a residential area, namely Brunswick, West, and Caswell. Is that what we want to do to our neighbors? Increase business traffic in their residential areas? I truly believe, and I'm asking the board to hear me, we need to go back to the way it was. I think the chief can attest that there was no major, serious accidents in that area. Thirty years ago, I was able to drive down Bay Street at 25 miles an hour. Now I take my foot off the pedal and just coast. This is a walking town, and people will walk, and they'll drive slow. The yacht basin has organically grown. People are aware that there's a lot of pedestrians, and they take their time. As far as this study for the yacht basin, and I'll close with this, there was a recommendation that we put seats and tables out in the streets once we created this living street. I don't know anybody in this room who's going to want to sit out on the street in 110 sweltering weather when across the street they can sit on the waterfront. We need to leave it the way it was. Please change it back. Thank you. Have a good evening and stay warm.
Thank you. And Madam Clark.
Bobby Smith.
Bobby Smith? Oh, that's fine. Well, since she didn't speak, I'm going to finish up on one more introductory remark that I meant to make, and then we'll continue. If our citizens, again, I have an update on the historic weather tower. Several large donations have been recently received, and we have the funding to move forward. So I've spoken with the engineer. I've requested completion within 90 days for the weather tower. And of note, this is from private donations from our citizens and organizations. So we're looking forward to the returning of our weather tower. I just wanted to share that with you in my introductory comments. Madam Clark.
I believe it's Bernice Leverich. That's okay. Mr. Paul Swenson.
Welcome, Mr. Swenson.
Good evening, board. Paul Swenson, 107 North Atlantic Avenue. About seven years ago, when Mr. Howard was mayor, I was honored to be on a committee with about eight other gentlemen and ladies to come up with a plan for the downtown waterfront. And it lasted a year, and we did come up with a plan. In fact, we came up with three plans. But on the first meeting, there was a lot of confusion about how much land, how much shoreline was included in that study. And we sought the guidance of Mr. Howard, and Mr. Howard basically said it was from Kensington Park down to the yacht basin, right to Fishy Fishy. That's where it stopped. It did not go into the yacht basin, but went exactly from Fishy Fishy down to Kensington Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clark.
Pat Kirkman.
If there's anyone in this room or city who does not know me, Pat Kirkman, 119 Park Avenue. And I am here to not speak tonight, praise the Lord, but to say that I have handed you a packet that I hope you will read, and that it summarizes basically almost one year of research that I've done on our cemetery operations. And I am hoping that eventually we will be able to take some action on that. I did not print enough for everybody who might show up here tonight, but if you would like this information, you may email me at patkirkman@gmail, and I'll be glad to send you electronic copies. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kirkman. I was worried about that three minutes with that handout. So thank you. Madam Clark.
Jenna Fontaine.
Welcome, Ms. Fontaine.
This is always a challenge. Oh, great. Thank you. Yes, that'll work. Hi, I'm Jenna Fontaine. I live at Ship Mass Way in River Mist. And I didn't write out anything really big or had a brochure to hand out, but I just wanted to give my true sense as someone who lives here, who eats here, shops here, and loves to walk. I, and Chief Coring knows, and the Board of Aldermen know that I have been here many times about pedestrian safety. In fact, I am so thrilled to see the safety islands where crosswalks are, that people can go there and feel protected. I really like the yacht basin being one-way. I understand that it's a little confusing, but I think that with modification and some thoughtfulness that it could work for everybody, but particularly for pedestrians. I feel much safer having the traffic flow just going one-way. And I really, I was here maybe two months ago, and there was a yacht basin study done, and I think it was alluded to. And they were talking about pedestrian safety. They were talking about safety islands and the traffic flow and plantings and greenery in there, tables outside, which would expand your business. So that's all I really wanted to say. I think if people put their heads together, I think there is a really, you know, if they just used, what is it, Moore Street, and kept the traffic off of the back residential areas, I think there's a way to do it. I think it needs more signage, more pedestrian walkway that has a berm or some protection. But I really think it's much safer for all the people who are walking. And that's my two cents. And you know, cars can't see me very well. So I have another whole perspective here.
Thank you. Madam Clark.
There's no one else, sir.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, thank you, everyone. I'm Rebecca Kelly. I reside at 5971 Dutchman Creek Road here in Southport. I have been here since 1991, I believe, and have watched the area grow since I was a child. I have a couple of things I just want to address tonight. Number one is the yacht basin area. I remember hauling ice across Bay Street above my head, and I never got hit by a car once. Traffic came in both directions, and I was able to dodge the traffic with ice and trash cans over my head. Never got hit. The yacht basin study that mentioned greenery and tables outside, I think would be fabulous for the kayakers to be able to just kayak right up and sit at a table. I mean, that would be fantastic. It was clear to me that the people who were in charge of that study had not been at the yacht basin at high tide, because those are the only people who could get to those tables would be the kayakers at that time. The other thing that I just wanted to address quickly is the possibility of changing the city charter and changing the term for the mayor from two years to four years. I don't think that seven people sitting on a board should make that decision. That needs to go to our citizens in a referendum, not something that seven people should decide. Regardless of who the mayor is, at any given time, seven people should not make a decision that big for our city. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll let you, Alderman Allen, and then I'll let our attorney explain that.
Ms. Kelly, thanks for bringing that up. Just so everybody knows, in no way, shape, or form has any decision been made on how that change might go into effect.
Yeah, there is a multiple-step process by statute in which this board would be able to go and make that decision. The first, which is on the agenda tonight, would be to just adopt a resolution of that mayoral term or charter change. And then there would also be notice of a public hearing. And so that And so that public hearing would have to go and take place before any action by this board. Furthermore, this board could decide to be put to a vote by the citizens of Southport. And even if they didn't, the Southport citizens could go and petition with enough registered voters to be able to go and overturn that and for it to be actually brought to a vote. So I wouldn't say extremely complicated, but there are a lot of moving pieces with charter amendments in this case.
So it was never a seven-person decision?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Allen. Anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. Thank you. Good discussion. Thank you very much. Next will be our ethics statement and I will read it. If any members know of any conflict of interest or the appearance of a conflict of interest concerning matters on the agenda, please so state at this time. Anyone with any conflict, any property on, in the yacht basin, anything like that? Okay, no, good. Thank you. Item E, approval of the agenda, and I'll entertain a motion.
This is both consent agenda and regular agenda?
No, this is just the approval of the agenda. There's a separate approval for the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, what?
This is the approval of the agenda. That's item H.
Then I'd like to make a motion to withdraw item two.
I'll second that. And I'd like to make a motion to remove item six, yacht basin traffic pattern. My recommendation is that we, as a group, take a field trip to the yacht basin along with our city manager and city staff. And if we'd like to include owners within the yacht basin, happy to do that as well.
Okay, we have a motion on the agenda to approve it with the exception and to omit item two and item six. So we have a motion and a second. And I understand now we do roll call votes. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? So if you would please call the roll.
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
Alderman Carroll?
Yes.
Alderman Art, Alts, excuse me.
When I say yes, I'm agreeing to Lowe's, right?
That's correct.
Okay, yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Lombardi?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mosteller?
Yes, ma'am.
So for clarification, the motion was from Robert Carroll to omit item two and item six.
Okay.
Did you do that correctly?
Right.
Okay, we're good.
Yes, we're good. According to our attorney, we're good. If you would like to change your roll call vote, you certainly can.
No, I just want to make sure that we throw out those words like friendly amendments and we clear up what we're actually voting on, but I'm good with what we are today.
All right. Thank you. All right, Board, thank you. Item F, special recognition. So we're honored to have the Lions Club here today and we have a presentation of a donation by the Lions Club and it's for an inclusive playground. And this allows for people, all people, to enjoy a playground regardless of disability. So whoever's representing the Lions Club, please come forward and we look forward to this. And Board, if you want to come up, and we'll all come up and accept, and Heather, if you will come up and accept, since it is a park, we'll let them speak and then we'll come up.
Good evening, Mayor Haydom and members of the Board of Aldermen. My name is Mike Blau. I'm the president of the Southport Lions Club and I'm here with a number of members of the club. And you can see, we all have our blue shirts on today for here. In 2019, the Lions Club started the planning process for the 75th anniversary of our founding in Southport. The Southport Lions Club was founded on May 24, 1945. As part of the planning process, the club evaluated opportunities to give back to the Southport community. We learned of the city's intention to create a park at Taylor Field and the desire of the city to incorporate an inclusive playground on the site and decided that the club wanted to be a part of that playground project. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, our plans for our 75th anniversary were put on hold. In 2021, plans commenced for a second time for our anniversary celebration, which would include a family fun day and car show. It was decided that all of the proceeds from these events would be donated to the city to assist in the playground, in the development and construction of a new inclusive playground. This evening, the Southport Lions Club is pleased to present a check for $8,734.37 to the city for the playground project. When I noted, it was our intention that all of the proceeds from the family fun day and car show go to this project. I wasn't kidding. And you get all of the dollars and all of the cents. The Southport Lions Club has worked with the city on innumerable projects over our 78 years. This site was originally the site of a USO building, which was dedicated in 1942 and was used for movies, dances, indoor games, and other activities for the military personnel stationed in the area. In 1947, the Southport Lions Club purchased the USO building and donated the building to the city of Southport. When the building burned down in 1995, our Lions Club donated to the building fund to construct this community center. I wanted to share this story to demonstrate that the relationship between the city and the Lions Club dates way back and we look forward to continued collaboration on projects and events with the city in the future. I would like to introduce Lion Roger Albazoo, who is the driving force behind the car show and the family fun day. Without his efforts, the event would not have occurred and we would not be here tonight with our donation for the inclusive playground. He will be presenting the check to the mayor and the board on behalf of the Southport Lions Club.
Can I add one thing? We cooked 500 hot dogs and we cooked 400 hamburgers, all due to the Lions Club that day. And we're looking forward to our 80th anniversary and that's in two years. So look forward to some more checks. So with that, Ms. Heather, here's the fake check.
We always have to have a big check and a small check.
Yes, and here is the rich. So as we met, here's about, you know, you told us about the vision, having this inclusive playground. So we had it fix up. Here's an opportunity to start.
Thank you. Thank you, and we appreciate. The Lions Club and the city of Southport have been connected in many, many ways over many, many years and we look forward to your 80th as well. And I hope I'll still be mayor, so we'll see, right? Thank you. Next, on our special recognition, police commendation, Chief Coring.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Board and Citizens. Chief Coring, it's a pleasure of mine tonight to stand before you to praise a good job done by our folks behind us, the men and women of the police department do a great job for our citizens. And, you know, that's always our objective is to protect and serve and come home at the end of the evening. Everybody goes home. So this is a response and a recognition in regards to a call we had back on December. I know we've delayed this a couple of board meetings because, of course, they're working time to time and out and training, but this is in response to a call that we had December 29th, about 1:00 in the afternoon. We received a dangerous call of a subject armed with a weapon. It's a very dangerous situation. This individual was going to do harm to somebody at one of our business establishments. So when we get a call, you know, we never say anything is random or routine in law enforcement, everything, you know, dangerous, just lurking around the corner as we know. So the folks standing behind me did a great job deploying to the locations to try to encounter or try to get ahead of this and locate the person before they got to the establishment, the information that we had. So it was a true teamwork effort. Everybody branched out. Sergeant Moore standing behind me was able to encounter the subject and peacefully bring some resolve to the situation. No one was injured. Everything was handled properly. Again, this is when, as the chief, I'm proud because this is when, you know, operational readiness, experience, and training really kicks in. A lot of people think this is sleepy little Southport and we don't have crime. So, but this is just a testament to the fact that we do. And so I'm very proud tonight. Just want to read a recognition to each one of these individuals. The recognition reads, "The Southport Police Department is recognizing the following individuals: Sergeant Thomas Moore, Detective Sergeant Matthew Burgess, Detective Riley Ransom, Officer Casey Burris, Officer Howard McGill, or McGill Howard, I always say his name backwards sometimes, and then Officer Mark Coy. In recognition of your dedication and continuing excellence in serving and protecting and for your efforts in response to a call for service on December 29, 2022, reported armed subject, you were successful in bringing a peaceful resolve to a very dangerous situation. Your actions reflect great credit upon yourself, the Southport Police Department and the city of Southport, given this ninth day of March 2023." So I appreciate y'all and we just want to recognize you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Coring. We all sleep easier at night knowing that you and your police department are available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So thank you. The last item on our special recognition agenda is a proclamation for Women's History Month. Yesterday was International Women's Day and we salute the women in our lives and in our community and our nation around the world and the accomplishments that they have made. So I will go up to the podium and read this proclamation. City of Southport proclamation in honor of Women's History Month, March 2023. Whereas the city of Southport recognizes the month of March as Women's History Month, established in 1987 by Congress to celebrate the contributions American women have made to strengthen and lead the nation since its inception. And whereas Women's History Month honors women of every race, status, and ethnicity who have challenged the structures that have kept women underappreciated and underrepresented throughout history, to establish an equal role for women, ensuring the value of equitable labor for future generations. And whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own suffrage, but at the forefront of every progressive social change movement in history, paving the way for future generations to enjoy the unalienable rights, duties, and responsibilities that are afforded to all citizens of the United States of America. And whereas each woman is extraordinary in her own way, proving that women working inside the home or outside the home in academia, science, technology, labor, government, or business, maintain a critical role in every sphere of society. And whereas the city of Southport is the home of many remarkable women, including Margaret Taylor Harper, who was the first woman to run for Lieutenant Governor for the state of North Carolina. Now therefore, Josephy Haydom, Mayor of the city of Southport, do hereby recognize March as Women's History Month to honor women everywhere for their outstanding achievements and invaluable contributions to society. Proclaim this ninth day of March 2023. God bless you all, the women in our lives. Thank you. And thank you, Lions Club, for being here. Always good to see you. And we'll have Reverend Alderman Low Davis make a comment, please, concerning our proclamation.
Thank you. In case it's missed, anybody's missed this, it's important here during Women's History Month to point out that our city manager is a woman, our assistant city manager is a woman, our city clerk is a woman, and our assistant city clerk is a woman. Thank you.
I'm glad you did that because I knew I would leave someone out and then I did not want to be accused of that. And our animal control officer is a female. And Heather Hemphill, our parks director, and we could go on and on. Our finance director. So that's, anyway, so thank you for doing that. And actually, I do this every year in honor of Reverend Alderman Low Davis in particular, a journalist and Reverend, and so thank you, thank you for that. And our Mayor Protem is a female, so we just thank you. Wonderful, was a woman. And I enjoy working with her so much, so thank you. Item G is approval of our consent agenda, and I will just review that very briefly. The water merger grant funding and the approval of the wastewater merger grant funding, this is $50,000 each from NCDQ Water Infrastructure Fund. And the city, the board needs just to approve, accepting of this so we can use this money. As you know, we're looking at sewer regionalization and feasibility study. So those are those two items. And then we're adopting a revised regular board schedule. This just allows us to put it on the website. These are the dates of your meetings, Board. And then we have minutes from our regular meeting, February 12, 2023. Hope you read those. And also the Board of Aldermen's special agenda review minutes from February 7, 2023. So I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second, Mr. Lombardi? A second Mayor Protem? And I guess we need a roll call, so Madam Clerk?
I was just going to suggest, if you just want to raise your hands, then I can count that way.
Sure, hands. Looks unanimous. Any opposed? No. All right. So a motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item H, our agenda, we'll start with item one, the electric rate study. We've not had a study done in a number of years, from what I understand. So I will call on Superintendent Ellie Pittinger.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Distinguished Board, Staff, Guests. It has been a couple of years since we did a complete rate study. Let me back up just a moment. I did hand out some comparisons, some rate comparisons to you all. I know a couple of you have been asking for them. I was able to get those. These are the 2021 data. We won't have 2022 data until probably this time next year. But anyway, there's the comparison of the rates for several different municipalities and co-ops in our area. And just keep in mind, it is a comparison. One of the things that the rate studies will look mind, it is a comparison. One of the things that the rate studies will look at, will look at is, one of the things that we'll look at is mainly a cost to serve. The cost to serve and residential, small, commercial, and demand, it'll all be looked at. And how we're going to fund this, we've got, in an unrestricted fund balance, we've got, well, let's just say plenty of money. I didn't know if I was allowed to actually give that figure. But the $27 for the rate study would be transferred to and used from line item 7210-1800, which is professional services, or 7210-4400, which is contracted services. It'll be a minimum system analysis to identify costs, recover customer charges, five-year financial projections, identification of multi-rate path. I'd like to take a look at the possibility of even demand billing on a residential and small commercial rate, but we don't measure that currently. There would be a presentation of the results to town staff, and if desired, a presentation to town council, and that can be done via either a WebEx or onsite, where they personally come down and give us the results of this study. And it'll take three to six months, so we could be looking at the results by our fiscal new year, or perhaps in September, when all the kids go back to school. So that's about all I have on it. It's 27,000 for the rate study, and I'm open to any questions.
Any questions for Superintendent Pittenger or for the city manager board? I'll entertain a motion to approve the study.
I'll make a motion to approve the study, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Alt. Is there a second? Second by Mayor Pro Tem. Any further discussion? Show of hands, please. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Superintendent. Okay. Item three, Amendment to Chapter Three, Animal Welfare. This concerns definition, broadening the definition of the use of leash. Kate, if you'd like to come up and brief us one more time. I know you went into this in detail last time, and we just want to hear briefly, and then we'll have a motion and a vote.
Good evening. My recommendation is that we go to the original wording and restrict use of electronic leashes as leashes. So it would be in the definition that is not recognized as a leash, and then the leash actual ordinance would state that there would be a physical control between the owner and the dog.
Any questions from the board for Kate? Okay. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion that the definition be changed, and electronic leash is not a leash that can be used to control your pet.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Amendment to Chapter Three, Animal Welfare Ordinance of the City of Winston, City of Southport Code of Ordinances as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion by Alderman Allen. Is there a second? Second by Mayor Pro Tem. Any further discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Kate. Item four, Shoreline Stabilization Project Decision and Shoreline to be included. And this concerns the length of the shoreline that the city wants to be used. As you know, the Tommy Harrelson Committee from 2015 started this. We have $5 million in funding to help move this forward. And the question is whether or not you want to include the entire 4,000 feet of the waterfront. And I'll call on Ms. Hemphill to give us further information and explanation.
Kind of nothing really has changed as far as information that we received last week. The Olson and Associates needs an answer pretty soon as to what the study for exactly what length. I believe it was sections, there were six sections which totaled 4,000 square feet. And then there was some question about breaking out a section in five and six out of it. But, you know, we were just, staff was making the recommendation to do the whole thing, because it would be really easier to have it all done at one time than to have to think you may need it and then add it at a later date.
I just want to also mention that just because you did 4,000 tonight and you vote say on that, when he comes back, Chris comes back with the final, to give you the final design, at that point, you can still say, no, I don't want to do that whole 4,000. But like Heather said, if you do the, if you don't do the 4,000, and then you want to change, now that's going to delay everything. So that's what.
This is just for the study area. That's what this is, is our study, which is, as Mr. Swinson said, from Kingsley to basically frying pan. And so it's the study area only. It's not a commitment to construction or anything.
Correct.
This actually goes from Bonnet's Creek down. That's the 4,000 feet. What you said was, what you thought was, you were told years ago, but the plan actually goes down to Bonnet's Creek. There's an extra 750 to 1,000 feet of private homes. I'm going to vote for this tonight, and I'm going to make an explanation of why I'm voting for it. One, I think the rationale that was presented here is good. And two, I believe somewhere down the line, we might be able to do a public-private partnership in which the living shoreline part of it that was brought up earlier this evening is more towards that end of the project. And so in order to be able to help everybody accomplish that, we need to vote, I personally think we need to vote on this tonight. So that's why my vote is in the affirmative tonight, not necessarily, we're still waiting to find out from the state whether or not it's even legal to do the last 1,000 feet. And we have not got a definitive answer on that yet.
And I'll just chime in real quick and say that I agree with Mr. Alt 100%.
It's the recommendation from staff that we do the whole 4,000 feet. So, yeah, and that is a rare moment. Okay, good. Thank you. So I should have said that first. I apologize. The staff's recommendation is the whole 4,000 feet. And that's the most efficient way of doing it. Let's see what they have for our entire shoreline, and then we'll take it from there. So I will entertain a motion. Okay. Motion to approve, motion to conduct the study and approve it. Second by Mr. Lombardi. Show of hands. All in favor? Any opposed? Passing unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for that. And thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
You have your whole 4,000 feet for now. This is good. Item five, amended audit contracts, reason for delay in audit. Ms. Trexler, our finance officer.
Good afternoon. So I've just come to ask that you make a motion to approve the amendment to the audit contract for the amended dates of the report.
Excellent. And you have in, and just for the public, if you've not read our packet, that some of the reasons were that we had major staff turnover. There was at one point that she did not have 90% of her staff. Is that correct? And so we had, you know, multiple reasons for this. So we have a motion and a second. And any further discussion? All in favor? Show of hands. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Trexler. Item I, Managers' Report.
Yes, I have a few quick items here, just for the board to know that I finally got ahold of North Carolina while, it took a while. So we finally had exchanged maps and all that. They still have to do the appraisal, so they're going to start working on doing that. So we're moving ahead. It just took a little while to get the correct people involved. Also, a reminder that the symposium, the next one, is March 13th. This is like a citizens academy at 2:00 p.m., and the stars of our show is the community relations team. So please come. We had a good attendance at our first one. And so please, we have one every single month with a different department. We're encouraging everybody to come about, to learn about Southport's government and how it functions. So March 13th, 2:00 p.m., right here. And also, there's a survey on the website about the city website. So if you can please go and fill that out, we need your input because we're going to be upgrading that. And then lastly, even though I've mentioned this before, I know everybody got their assessments from the county, and I know everybody thinks sticker shock. Just a reminder, do not take the value you are given and multiply it times current taxes. That does not work that way. So once we get the grand list, as I call it, from the county, our grand list is going to change. And I would assume, based on what I'm reading, it's going to go a lot higher. And then when the board decides on a tax rate, it usually, the tax rate goes down. But so don't panic that, oh my God, look at what my taxes are going to be. It doesn't work like that. And then lastly, as I try to do every month, I want to wish the following employees a happy anniversary for all the years of service they've given. And really quickly, we have Eddie Moore at nine years, which is Park and Rec. He's our basketball referee. Angie Bates in Finance, nine years, the accounting technician. Dale Washington, Park and Rec, basketball referee, eight years. Thomas Moore, one of our police sergeants, four years. Chris Martin, code enforcement, three years. Sharon McDaniel, three years as a volunteer firefighter. Harrison Hart, one year as a police officer. And our own assistant city manager, city clerk, two years. So congratulations, everybody. Excellent job. Thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Committee reports. Mr. Allen?
None. Thank you.
Alderman Carroll?
Fourth of July Festival Committee is well underway. I think this is going to be the best Fourth of July that we've had under Randy's guidance. I'm pretty excited about it. The HPC is well underway with inventorying our historic district. So that's really exciting. So if you see us out there taking photos of your house, don't get weirded out.
Alderman Alt?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. Alderman Davis?
Forestry meets this coming Tuesday at 5:00 at Indian Trail Meeting Hall. And among other things, the committee's working on plans for Arbor Day. It will include the ice cream truck, and it will be held down at Taylor Park Field.
Looking forward to that. Thank you. Mr. Lombardi?
You have the book. Beautification did meet this past Saturday. We attacked all the weeds that have grown over the winter and mulched. And the city is looking a little better. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lombardi. A lot of work that y'all do, so thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. One for Parks and Recs, March 31st at 10:30. Plan to be at Taylorfield Park for the ribbon cutting. The official ribbon cutting will be March 31st, 10:30 at Taylorfield Park. And the regular meeting of the planning, the regular meeting of the Parks and Recs Board is next Tuesday at 6:30 at the Indian Trail Meeting Hall. And next week, Thursday at 6:00 here, it will be the regular planning board meeting.
All right. Thank you. And the update from ABC Board, they met yesterday, yesterday evening, and excellent meeting. We have two new members, Mr. Jim Poppy and Mr. Adam Stedman. So that went very well. That store is quite successful in their, in their sales. And we're grateful for that. They're having a meeting at the store in April, so the new members of the board can meet the employees and vice versa. So that's going well, board. So thank you. Item K, Mayor's Comments. I'll be very brief. I want to thank the city manager for mentioning the Southport Symposium. Please try to come. In fact, I'm going to try to come to this one. And Madam Clerk, I don't know if there's an issue with Alderman and Mayor being there, that type of thing, but we're there to listen, so there shouldn't be a problem. But I would like to attend as many of them as possible. So thank you for this. Spring Festival is coming up, April 7th and 8th. That's over Easter weekend, sponsored by DSI and also by the Kiwanis Club, 160 vendors and live entertainment. So we'll be looking forward to that. Also, I want to wish everyone a Happy St. Patrick's Day on Friday, March 17th. Again, I want to wish everyone a happy Easter. Our meeting will be after Easter, but Easter blessings to all of you and your family. And our next meeting will be April 13th. Staff reports are in your packet. And item M will be board comments. Alderman Allen? Alderman Alt? I was, y'all have gotten along so well together. I've got you paired in my mind now. So maybe we can move y'all next to each other next meeting. Alderman Carroll?
I would love to not be between these two guests. Yeah. So, so I just wanted to make a comment about a letter to the editor in the State Port Pilot. You know, it's hard enough to read through some of the weeds in the paper anyway, but the misinformation that is spreading, specifically as it relates to the sale of this 440-plus acres that we have, we're not selling it for $441,000. That's not happening. It hasn't, that hasn't been a part of the conversation. When we came to the table, you saw what we did. We had the discussion. We made a decision on the path forward, which is ultimately to put it into conservation. That process is going to ultimately get us to the point of an appraisal. We'll find out what the fair market value is, and that's what we'll sell it for. So I'm pretty excited about that. I think it's a good thing, and it's a good way forward for the City of Southport. Just want to make sure that we're looking at the information and trying to really determine what's accurate and what's not.
Thank you. Alderman Alt?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do hope that we can get the show and tell for the yacht basin traffic flows hopefully up and running this coming week. And then I want to say a shout out to Franklin Park, the art gallery, for the wonderful event they had. I had a good pleasure of going to dinner afterwards with one of the winners from that event, and we got to chat about it. And it was, it was a packed house. It was very, very nice. And just, so you know, this is a boating community. So on April 2nd at 2:00 p.m. down by the yacht basin, there'll be the blessing of the fleet, which is the official start of the boating season. It goes back hundreds and hundreds of years to the Mediterranean. You have a blessing of the fleet. The boats come by, they get a blessing, they get a flower, and they move on out. It's kind of, if it's a nice day, it's a beautiful event to go see. And Mr. Wilson right over there is, has always been one of the lead people in this whole thing. whole thing.
Thank you. Sounds like a wonderful event. We look forward to it. Alderman Davis?
Only this. Alderman Ald alluded to the show and tell about the yacht basin. Could the city manager elaborate on that, what we're thinking of and why we took this off the agenda tonight?
What I'm thinking of?
Yes.
I think, you're going to have to have a special meeting. We're all going to have to meet down there. I'm going to talk to the mayor, the best way to handle this, because I, you know, obviously you don't want it to get too crazy. So I'll talk to the staff about a good scenario. I have a couple ideas in my head of how to do this. And then, you know, it'll be, it'll be almost like ask questions, staff reports out, only we're going to be standing on a corner doing it. So we'll figure it out. But the more important thing, and I will do this as soon as I can, is try to get dates and times from all of you. That's the important thing. Because we got to get, we got to post it in time and all that. So you will hear from me tomorrow.
So for clarity, we, as a, as a board, will go down to the yacht basin, look at the, the street, measure the streets, and get ourselves fully informed about safety and hear from all the city staff, the, the chief, the engineer, and so on.
Right.
Okay.
The, I just, I'm thinking out loud here. I think the only thing is, we need a decision as soon as possible because it's that season. And I know, Mayor, you don't typically like to vote at special meetings, but I think we're almost, if we can do it.
Yeah, yeah, we can. If it's a special Board of Alderman meeting and noted as such, we just can't vote at workshops.
Okay.
Yes. So yes, we can vote.
If we wait till April...
No, we, we have to have this done before, I'd like to have it done before Easter because, you know, we're going to be busy then, but definitely before Memorial Day. Mr. Lombardi?
Yes, I just would like to thank all for moving us forward here and getting things done. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one thing. Nature Fest Lecture Series. Be sure to be on the lookout for this. The next experience, the last one was Pollinators. It was excellent. This one is going to be about coexisting with wildlife. We all have wildlife around us. Small gators have appeared in and out of our lives. So this is an opportunity. Becky Savage from District 2 Wildlife Education Division with the North Carolina Wildlife Resources. The event will be Tuesday, March 28th at 7:00 p.m. at the Indian Trail Meeting Hall. So plan to be there. It's, it's really an interesting, fun community. And Kate will be with us.
Thank you. Item N is a closed session, and we'll need a motion for that.
So moved.
I'm sorry. That's, thank you. That was good, but I have to, I, that was great, but I want to finish the, we have to read the general statute, and then we'll do it. Yes. North Carolina General Statute 143-316.11A6. This is to either talk about a personnel leisure or meet with our attorneys. We'll be meeting with our attorney in closed session. We have a motion by Alderman Carroll. Is there a second? Second by Mayor Pro Tim and Alderman Allen. All in favor? Raise your hands. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. We'll go into closed session now. Thank you.